And I haven't seen Joanne join us just yet.
There she is.
If it's okay with you, Joanne, I'll start with the welcome script.
That would be lovely if you would please, thank you.
You're welcome. Welcome to this virtual meeting of the Board of Education. Attending a virtual meeting may be a new experience for some, so please allow me to take a moment to review some procedures that will allow everyone to participate. When speaking, please state your name, address, and topic before beginning your comments. Some meeting participants are joining by telephone and cannot see the face or name of the speaker as shown on the computer screen. The public participation at board meetings is following Bylaw 0167.3 and applies to this virtual meeting as well. Please mute your phone or computer microphone to prevent feedback and background noise during times when you are not speaking. There is a chat box found in the upper right-hand corner of your screen. The chat box may be used to pose a question. The name or telephone number of the person posting the chat comment will appear on the screen. The Board President will read the question aloud during the appropriate section of the meeting for the guests calling in by telephone. This meeting has an opportunity for public comment under item number nine on the agenda. If you would like to register to make comments during this meeting, please type your name, address, and topic in the chat box at this time. If you are joining this meeting by telephone tonight and would like to register to speak, if you would please state your name, address, and topic now, and if I can ask the Board Clerk to make note of that, and I will try to jot them down as well.
All right, thank you, Dr. Oppert.
All right, all Board of Education votes will be conducted through a roll call vote, and this meeting is being recorded, and that includes anything typed into the chat box. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We will come to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic in which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and um, this evening I believe Mrs. Petkey is absent, so I will call the roll. Mr. Seager?
Here.
Mr. Forbes?
Here.
Mr. Holman?
Here.
Mrs. Petkey is absent. Mr. Scheller?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
And Mrs. Johnson is present as well. Dr. Oppert, can you verify publication of meeting?
Yes, it was.
Thank you. All right, presentation. Q-12 Survey Strategies from the Administrative Team.
And I can share a bit of information on that. It is just verbal. Right now, we have two parallel groups, one for teachers and one for support staff, addressing the unique needs of each group. The Q-12 Support Staff Committee had their organizational meeting, and the group is looking to do a support staff engagement survey as it relates specifically to communication. The two committees would like to run in parallel paths, so the committee chairs will be moving shortly to discuss upcoming agendas so that we can follow a similar pattern or progression. The administrative team is also doing more to be clear in communications, specifically stating actions or communications that are taking place to increase trust and staff engagement. One of the things that Mr. Nitski noted was that sometimes there isn't an obvious connection between the action or the motivation behind a new strategy we're trying and the fact that it actually relates to staff engagement. So we're trying to be more overt that when we're trying a new strategy, a new communication technique, anything of that sort that we're specifically stating that staff engagement is the purpose behind that. And that's all I have at this time on that topic unless you have any questions.
If Joanne is talking.
Johnson, I think you're muted right now.
Sorry, I neglected to unmute myself. I apologize for that. Announcements, we received the following contributions to the district. A donation from Alyn Pol of $100 to the band program and from Tierney Incorporated, donation of a Lenovo Chromebook 14E, 14-inch, 32-gigabyte processor and touchscreen. So thank you to both of them who are very generous contributions to the district. Consent Agenda, would any member like any item removed from the consent agenda to be dealt with separately? We will then vote by general consent. And hearing notes that the consent agenda carries. Public Comments.
I don't see anyone registered in the chat. Is there anyone that would like to do so now? Or if you're calling in by telephone, if you could state your name, address, and topic? I'm not seeing anything, President Johnson.
Thank you. Correspondence, we did receive a thank you card from Mrs. Pol for her gift that she received for her retirement from the Board. And I'm trying to quickly scroll here through my notes and find it, so I apologize that I'm not a little bit more prepared. I did have the opportunity to deliver it to her, and so it was a very gratifying experience. Dear Board Members and dear Dr. Oppert, your gift for my many years of, for my years of service on the School District of Manawha Board is exquisite and elegant and has already found its place in my office. My collaboration with all of you to build a better school district of Manawha was reward enough. Thank you sincerely for your kindness. Keep taking care of our students and our staff and may the, and move the community forward. I believe that says. I apologize for writing sometimes is beyond my deciphering, but it was a very lovely thank you, and I was thrilled to have the opportunity to drop that off to her and to be able to visit with her. Board Recognition, we had none this month. And District Administrators Report, Dr. Oppert, please.
Yes, I've got to check. Our, is Kyle on or Reese?
I'm here, Reese's, Reese Poppy is here.
Hi Reese, how are you doing?
I'm doing good.
Glad to hear it. So tell us what's happening at the high school right now. What are, what are some of the highlights of things going on?
Most people are excited to hear that we can, there's discussion of going back to class full-time. There's a lot of, like, everybody's getting prepared for finals that are happening this week.
Sounds good, we always like to hear that. I believe I saw you at Quiz Bowl last week. Any, any news we'd like to share on that?
Um, that, that every, everything is able to happen, which is good.
Who were you competing with last week?
We competed, we competed against Shay Okden.
It seemed like a pretty tough competition. We didn't win that one, but pretty challenging questions.
Yes, they were, yeah.
Are you hearing anything else at the high school? Issues or topics that you'd like to make the Board aware of?
No, those are, those that were the big concerns that people had, that I've heard of.
So, did you have anyone talking about what it's going to be like when the entire high school returns to in-person instruction?
Um, not many people have talked about what it's going to be like, but people are, most people that I have heard have, have been really wanting it.
I'm guessing you're, you're missing your friends, not being able to see everybody every day?
Yeah, because right now we get to see like half of, half of our class only in half of the entire school.
Board Members, do you have any questions for Reese this evening?
Thank you very much for being here tonight, Reese.
We really do appreciate the student perspective, so we're always glad when we can get someone to join and give us the inside story on what it looks like from the student's point of view.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak.
You're most welcome. Be sure to note that on your resume. Colleges love to see that kind of thing in employers. Thank you. For legislative updates, just a couple of things. It was announced that it is Governor Evers' intention to extend the statewide face covering mandate for an additional 60 days that would take it into late March. Republican State Senator Steve Nass also announced at about the same time that he would work on a joint resolution in the state legislature to immediately end the new emergency declaration and any related orders. So we're just watching to, to see what all transpires there, but it doesn't influence the recommendations that we have here at the local level or, or are receiving from the county Department of Health. In terms of vaccine distribution, I did fill out a form issued by the State Department of Public Instruction last Friday. High-level estimates on what would be needed here locally to address the school district needs. And then over the weekend, the Wapaka County Department of Health sent out a similar survey. They were a little more specific in needing detailed information about exactly how many people at the elementary level and the secondary level and. So I'm gathering that information, and we'll probably have that submitted tomorrow. So I did a quick Google survey to access that information. Your monthly enrollment report, let me make that just a little bit larger, includes the second Friday in January count. That officially needs to be submitted by Mrs. Basset by the end of this week. So our numbers are fairly stable. Up a couple, down a couple, but overall there's a slight increase over the third Friday count in September. And then in terms of curriculum happenings, the math instructors district-wide have been looking at new materials. There are two vetted materials at the elementary level and two vetted for the high school level or secondary level, six through 12. Last week, a consultant from CISA VI did demonstration lessons, so you could see what it would look like, what it would feel like to have students actually use the programs, how the programs function in slightly different ways. But whether the elementary and secondary chose either program, both flow together seamlessly in terms of meeting state standards. So this Wednesday, there's a meeting. Those that didn't have an opportunity to see the live demonstration lessons can see videos of those lessons at the elementary level. Or if they wanted to just look at those lessons again, we have a rubric established that includes the board criteria for adopting new materials as well as the, the math standards. So teachers kind of have an objective way of rating the quality of the materials, and then they will be able to view the sample material. So hopefully by the end of the month, we'll be able to make a decision on which materials to recommend to the Curriculum Committee next month for official adoption and inclusion in the budget. And then last week, I also met with the secondary social studies teachers. In the transition of curriculum directors, several curriculum directors back, somehow the social studies teachers did not have an opportunity to adopt new materials. And so we've been looking to see what is highly recommended at this point in time. What we're seeing at the secondary level is there's a nice online resource that Holy Hill School District is using, so we're doing a preview of that this week. Most of the other school districts are developing their own materials, which is very time-intensive, but we could look at paying the curriculum rate and have people actually provided with summer work time to develop that, if that's the direction they'd like to go. So there should be a lot more activity during the February Curriculum Committee meeting. The COVID-19 update, would you like me to go through the slideshow now or when the topic comes up on the Agenda for Action?
Perhaps it might be more prudent to do it when it comes up for Action.
Okay, we'll hold on that for a minute then. We have the ballot sample. Let me enlarge that for you a little bit. So the drawing took place in district office this past week, and then that was sent into the county. And so that determines the order of the names as they will appear on the ballot. And also last week, the Fitness Center had a soft opening. Just wanted to show you in case you were looking for Fitness Center information. When you go to the district homepage, choose the "Our Community" tab. And then on the left-hand side, right under "Our Community", the first listing would be the Fitness Center. Click on that, and that takes you to the Fitness Center information. General information on the left-hand side, and then the two forms that need to be filled out. Live links here on the right-hand side. Also live links embedded in the, the description itself. So I heard we had about a dozen citizens signed up so far, and a few more that I visited with, just happened to see people around town last week that said that they were planning on signing up soon. So just want to encourage people. There's also an article in the upcoming Wolfpack Express about the Fitness Center. And I think that's everything I have, unless any of you have questions for me.
All right, thank you, Dr. Oppert.
I have a question.
Oh, sorry, go ahead, Mrs. Holman.
I had to get unmuted. Is there a supervisor assigned to the Fitness Center? Is there some?
No, there is not. There's a sign-in. When you use your fob to access the facility, it does record the person who is assigned to that fob, so we can see what time they entered. And there will be a security camera in that area. So it's really an honor system.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Dr. Oppert? All right, thank you. School Operations Report, are there any questions or comments from the Board regarding school operations reports? Any comments, Ms. Brower or Mr. Wolfgram regarding your reports?
This is Danny, I don't have any comments right now.
Thank you.
This is Dan, I can just chime in and adding on to Dr. Oppert's report of the Fitness Center. The people that we've seen there have been very appreciative of the fact that it is open to the public. We've had a lot of great, positive reports coming back about not only the cleanliness, but the variety of machines. We will be adding to that in the coming month with some creative long-term budgeting that we had talked about. I collaborated with both physical education teachers and weight room supervisors. We were able to squirrel away enough money from several different sources where there'll be a new crossover cable machine that should be arriving in about four to five weeks, or another large piece of equipment that both students and community will benefit from.
All right, thank you, Mr. Wolfgram. Business-related reports, does anyone have any questions or comments from the Board regarding the business-related reports? Any comments, Mrs. O'Brien? I guess that would be a negative. Directors Reports, any questions for Mr. Crowberubius about his report? And any comments?
Yes, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that the Chromebooks did come in over the weekend finally. The order from July came in, and I just wanted to do a thank you to Mrs. Ort, Ms. Kruger, and Mrs. Gast, who came in over the weekend and helped do a lot of unboxing and a lot of shuffling of the devices up, getting set up. We got a, a lot of work done over the weekend, so normally something that would take several weeks to do, I want to say we got about a third of it done in one day. So I just wanted to give a shout out to those three for helping out.
Thank you. All right, Board Comments, do any Board Members have any comments they wish to share publicly?
Yeah, this is Russ Johnson here. I would like to thank the students and parents that reached out to me today about the school reopening via email and by phone. Appreciate the calls, and, and your comments will be looked at.
I would echo the same as well. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Committee Reports, are there any questions for any committee chair or any comments from any committee chair? Hey, Unfinished Business, item 18A, consider approval of policy 7250.
Luke Scheller? I move that the Mano Board of Education approve Neola Policy 7250, commemoration of exceptional individuals and groups as presented.
I have a motion by Mr. Scheller, do I have a second?
Russ Johnson, I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Johnson, any discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed by a roll call vote, Mr. Seager?
Aye.
Mr. Forbes?
Aye.
Mr. Holman?
Aye.
Mr. Scheller?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
And it is an aye for Mrs. Johnson as well. Motion carries by roll call vote, Mrs. Petkey is absent. New Business, item A, consider approval of Kubison Agreement for Payment During Virtual Learning Days.
Russ Johnson, I move that the Mano's Board of Education approve the Kubison Memorandum of Understanding Related to Payment During Virtual Learning Days as presented.
I have a motion by Mr. Johnson, do I have a second?
Luke Seager, a second.
Second by Mr. Seager, any discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Seager?
Aye.
Mr. Forbes?
Aye.
Mr. Holman?
Aye.
Mr. Scheller?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
And it is an aye for Mrs. Johnson as well. Motion carries roll call vote, Mrs. Petkey is absent. Item B, consider approval of school year 2021 calendar change.
Luke Scheller? I move that the Mano Board of Education approve the school year 2021 calendar change to move the end of the third quarter to balance the number of third and fourth quarter instructional days as presented.
I have a motion by Mr. Scheller, do I have a second?
Stan Forbes, second.
Second by Mr. Forbes, any discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Seager?
Aye.
Mr. Forbes?
Aye.
Mr. Holman?
Aye.
Mr. Scheller?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
And it is an aye for Mrs. Johnson as well. Motion carries by roll call vote, Mrs. Petkey is absent. And Dr. Oppert, if you want to go ahead and present the slideshow before we entertain any motions or discussion for item C, please.
I would be happy to do so. So the administrative team worked on putting this together over the past several weeks. And we did have feedback from staff. All employee groups were invited to participate in input. So our goal again has always been the high-quality education that this community expects while mitigating risk. Looked at the four key performance indicators. Same, similar format to the presentation you saw earlier in the year. This time, the goal is a little bit different. The purpose is to plan for the return of all students to in-person instruction with the greatest impact, in this case being on high school students who are currently in AB cohorts on opposite days of the week. Whoops. So the goal is, as we're moving toward low risk, to return to what is considered to be a more traditional model of instruction. Low risk in this case being related to the number of COVID exposures decreasing both locally and across the county. So a few weeks back, right before winter break, as we were meeting with the Wapaka County Department of Health and the county superintendents, numbers were returning to the types of statistics we haven't seen since about back in September. And local numbers were in that same basic range. Since then, we have had a bit of an uptick, but that very well could be related to the winter break. but that very well could be related to the winter break. We knew families and there might be gatherings and things of that sort. So slight uptick. Right now, we have two classrooms that are quarantined and learning virtually. And then a variety of other staff and/or students that are quarantining as well. One athletic team. So this is the framework that we have been using as guidance. And again, for the county, we have been hovering between the 126 and 175 and the 176 and 225, just on the cusp between these two columns. A few weeks ago, we were at about 178. So just a few cases over. And the movement was in the direction of all face-to-face. And then as a local district, we're on the left-hand column. We have rather consistently been in the first row. Every once in a great while, we may have dipped for a very short period of time into the second row. So again, the guidance would seem to indicate that we're moving in the direction of K-12 face-to-face. So what the principals have been working on to date is taking a look at students who have experienced a failure to thrive. And that could be for a number of reasons. In some instances, virtual instruction just doesn't provide the personal connection that some students need to learn. For some, virtual instruction doesn't work very well due to a weakness in our rural broadband environment. So the technology itself isn't always effective for some of the learners. In other instances, it's been an attendance issue. Students haven't been online regularly participating in the instruction. And all of these can contribute to students struggling in the learning environment. So one of the things that has been done is the criteria that we've always expected regarding students and their expectations for virtual learning. We're sent out in a report to those students slash their families that have been participating in virtual instruction. This was done at both the elementary and secondary level. So parents are aware of how their child is doing, both with attendance and their learning. And then we're asking that parents that wish to have their students continue to participate in virtual instruction first have to meet the criteria for being successful in that environment. And secondly, to sign a second semester commitment to continue in virtual instruction. And that would be an agreement between the student, their parents, and the principal of their school. There are also some students with exceptional needs. This could be special education, English language learners gifted and talented that by the nature of their unique needs would benefit more from in-person instruction. So we are asking those students to return to in-person instruction on the first day of second semester, which is January 26. In terms of what you're going to see as the proposal for changes for all students returning to 4K to 12 in-person instruction, that date was not suggested by the administrative team. We'd like to have that conversation with the board based on Wapaka County Department of Health recommendations. So again, there is an eligibility requirement and an agreement that needs to be signed prior to the start of second semester for those families that wish to continue to access the virtual. Both synchronous and asynchronous options are available and would be agreed to in that contract. So the biggest changes at the elementary level would be classroom cohorts would return to art class in the art room and music class in the music room. There are some real distinct advantages to those programs being able to be held in their own classrooms. The number of resources that are readily available, the ability to grab resources out of cabinets and enhance the experience for students. In the music room, the musical instruments that are readily available. And the key there continues always to be sanitizing and disinfecting in between cohort usage. So the teachers will time the end time of one class and the start time of the next to allow for cleaning to take place. Plus, students can also be involved in cleaning their workspaces. And then students with exceptional needs being able to attend specials, art, music, and Fayed with their homeroom cohort. And again, the physical connection, being able to be physically present with their peers is extremely important. That social dynamic for social emotional learning and health. At the middle school level, probably the biggest change that would be noted would be cohorts of students actually being able to go into high school classrooms for instruction. An example might be students in eighth grade who are taking freshman algebra course as an example. Or again, using the art room or the music room. And sanitizing and disinfection will of course be important. And high school, being able to have all high school students attend five days a week. Making accommodations. There are a few course sections that are larger numbers of students. So to the degree that it's possible, we want to maintain that six-foot distancing. Being that the building is older and back in those days, classroom sizes weren't always constructed as large as what they might be designed nowadays. They might be assigned an alternative location during a particular class hour, a room that could accommodate spacing students out more comfortably. The choir would like to return to the coral classroom. And high school students would pick up their lunch in the cafeteria and eat in their assigned classroom cohorts, which is very similar to what they do now. And in terms of athletics and co-curriculars, the goal would be to introduce the opportunity to have visiting teams or visiting groups, quiz bowls or other such activities, FFA, student council, to be able to invite guests to come into the building, which we have not done. And what we would do, the suggestion here was two tickets per person so that the home and the visiting would have the same number of guests being invited into the building. And mitigation strategies would still continue even after vaccination. There are numerous studies ongoing, but the question was posed even today, and I confirmed with Mr. Wote that a fully vaccinated person could still continue to be a carrier of the virus and therefore could spread it to others. So even when vaccinated, we're still waiting for more of the studies to be completed. It's early. But early indications would seem to indicate that you can still be an active carrier. And I think the only other slide that might be of interest, and let me just hop out of this is reviewing again the face covering slide. So Mr. Wote does reinforce the importance of if we are returning to in-person for all students, the importance of face coverings to be worn at all times except when eating or drinking. And then following the WIAA expectations as well. So I'll pause there to see if there are any questions. I did leave the remainder of the slides in the packet, but there aren't significant changes to any of those slides. The first 15 are the new ones.
With this, wouldn't we kind of looking at start of semester as if we vote that way to reopen? 26?
That was a natural start date for us. In terms of, you know, start of a semester is a, makes sense logically. The only reason Mr. Wote suggested we may want to hold on that for a week or two is we do have at least, I believe, one class quarantine that won't be eligible to return until after that date. I believe their return date is either the 27th or 28th.
But this really only affects the high school in a way.
Right.
It does. He was concerned if there might be more incidence of spread.
What about these districts that are around us that are all open, you know?
Yeah.
Their numbers have dropped dramatically. Yeah, their numbers have dropped dramatically and have stayed down. So I did prepare a little bit of a summary for you. These are Wapaka County districts. And the other district that joins us for regularly scheduled meetings on Wednesday is Wild Rose. So I included them as well. Clintonville's working toward five days a week. They're at four days a week currently. New London's board voted on five days a week last Monday, and they started last Thursday. Wild Rose has been in-person all school year and has been quite successful using their mitigation strategies. Marion started five days a week last Monday. Iola was planning to start on the 25th. And they had an earlier start date. They pushed back to the 25th because they had a slight uptick in the number of active cases in their community. Wapaka's doing a phased-in model. So they're bringing people back in three groups, leaving a couple of weeks in between each. And finally, Y Week of Fremont started last Monday. None of them had the large quarantine numbers that we had. Ours happened rather suddenly, all within a few days' time, a week's time.
And I believe a lot of these towns are not cohorted either when they're open either four days or five days a week.
No, they drop that. They were, they were previously doing what we're doing.
Right.
And then moving to five days a week means ending the cohort and starting the all-in. Yeah. At the high school level, at the secondary level. You know, homerooms at the elementary level, they still are sticking to the cohort model.
And if we go at this, everybody kind of has to meet the standards, so to speak, because they have to, if they're failing grades, they have to come in and that kind of thing, correct?
Correct. Dan can speak to that a little bit and/or Danny, but the failure to thrive is a significant problem, not just in our community. We've noticed it across the state. Even nationally, we've seen reports to that effect that it does not work for all learners. There are some students who are doing extremely well in virtual instruction, but they tend to be extremely organized, very self-directed, very disciplined in their nature. It's a certain kind of personality that seems to do well with that style of learning. And many young people just developmentally are not ready for that at this time. So not a criticism of anybody, it's just, it's not for everyone. Dan or Danny, would you add anything to that?
This is Danny. What I would add is that the students at the elementary level that are doing well virtually have a high level of parent or at least adult engagement in their education. Like especially the younger the grades, the more the adults are sitting next to the child all day long and helping them through. So that's, those are the ones that we've noticed. We have noticed at the elementary, we didn't have a large number of virtual. We had, we had a number, but probably, I didn't do a count today, but probably at least half have come back on their own in the last two weeks. And what has happened is they were coming back intending just a couple of days a week. And by after the first or second day back, I got a phone call saying that they wanted to be back five days because the students, the students needed it and the parents needed it also. So that's what we're looking at. I think after all of the letters go home, I will only have a handful or less students continuing virtual right now.
This is Dan. I can chime in with a few comments as well. The contracts for our students that were synchronous or virtual did go out notifying them if they had truancy issues or did not have a C average, as was presented in the packet. They will be requested to become, coming back to school at the start of the second semester. So that's kind of tier one of getting our students back that are in desperate need of in-person instruction or have been labeled as failure to thrive. For the board this evening is really about those other students that parental choice has kept them out for other reasons. But the contract does say the only way that someone could continue synchronously or virtually is if they have a COVID-related medically documented medical issue or somebody in the home that is also impacted if COVID were to enter the home. So the students have to have C averages and not be in jeopardy with a C or less to be considered to continue to stay virtual.
Russ Johnson here. I would like to share a couple of the comments from the phone calls and emails that I got. Several students that emailed me are begging to come back to school because they said they need it. And another parent had mentioned to me that by allowing these students that are, that are so-called below C average coming in, you're punishing the students that want to be there and bringing back the students that are failing. And they feel like that's punishing the students that want to be there. So I just wanted to share them comments so everybody heard those comments.
Well, it's kudos to the teachers. I know some of the people I talked to, they said they definitely want it because they, their kids learn better when they're at school. So, you know, it's kudos to the teachers if they want to come back and be with the teachers and stuff, so.
A lot of learning is based on relationships first. The teachers build a community in their classroom and that's more difficult to do in the virtual environment. And so there, we've seen it in, in coaches and sporting events that kids will do amazing things for, for people they have a relationship with. And I know they miss their friends too. And for some of the kids, there's nothing that beats being face-to-face with their teacher, with their classmates, to be able to have discussions, work on projects, that types of hands-on and really engaged sort of activities that we know provide the best kind of learning opportunities for our students. So we, we are eager to have them back because we can be more highly effective in our instruction that way.
Can we make a change just to bring everybody back on to 26?
No data's been set, so that's among the questions for the board tonight about, do you want to set a firm date or do you want to set a set of criteria that need to be met by the district in order to, to set the date?
I would say most of the schools that are the same size as this on your list are, are basically back. So I don't see any reason why we can't be.
The only reason that we were cautioned was because we had a high incidence rate and none of them do. Some of them have, have almost no incidents in their, in their school list. That's.
Yeah, with the high school level stuff is coming back, I think this week, if I have that correct. And I think the other stuff is all in elementary schools, so I don't. So that'll be done at the high school level anyway, by Wednesday or so.
I would like to see us shoot for a all back start date for the beginning of the semester myself.
I personally will agree with the two gentlemen that just talked. I would like to see the 26th as a five-day-a-week full in-person class.
Would somebody here make a motion as such?
The person that you've talked to was Russ Holman, by the way.
Hi, Russ.
And when you are making a motion, if you could state a beginning date?
What part, Dan?
Sure, I'd like to make a motion to, for January 26th to be a in-person date, five days a week, in-person class. Full time.
I have a motion by Mr. Forbes. Do I have a second?
Second that, Mr. Holman.
Second by Mr. Holman. Any discussion?
Just to confirm, can we insert for the point of clarity for K to 12? Just to be clear that, if that is indeed what is intended.
Four K through 12. Correct.
Thank you. Any discussion? Mr. Seager.
Hi.
Mr. Forbes?
Hi.
Mr. Holman?
Hi.
Mr. Scheller?
Hi.
Mr. Johnson?
Hi.
And it is an I from Mrs. Johnson as well. Motion carries for a return date of the start of second semester, January 26th, by a roll call vote with Mrs. Petten being absent. Consider approval of the appointees to the Human Growth and Development Committee.
Drew Scheller, I move the man on Board of Education to approve the Human Growth and Development Committee appointments as presented.
Joanne, I think you're muted.
I am so sorry. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Russ Johnson, I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Johnson. Any discussion?
I was still waiting to get a confirmation on some students that would be willing to serve on the committee. And there was one more parent I was waiting to hear back on. Under this motion, would you be comfortable with allowing me to include those folks in the committee and have that group start meeting in the first part of February? Or would you rather wait for me to conduct the meeting until after the February board meeting when we have those additional meetings?
I'd be fine with it. As is, or with, with adding a couple of people if you need to.
Any discussion? Hearing done. Mr. Seager?
Hi.
Mr. Forbes?
Hi.
Mr. Holman?
Hi.
Mr. Scheller?
Hi.
Mr. Johnson?
Hi.
And as an I from Mrs. Johnson as well, motion carries by roll call vote. I do want to go back to item C though and get a point of clarity. Stan, in your motion to set the return date to the 26th, does that include the ability of students that have medical documentation that is COVID-related to stay synchronous or asynchronous with the contract? Or would that require them to, to return to in-person as well? That was another part of that presentation, I think, that we didn't really necessarily.
Right. I mean, as long as they have a contract that, or that they have COVID-related issues to stay virtual, I would agree to that. I would motion that.
Was it just? Can I ask a quick question?
Please.
Okay, so you mentioned the medical documentation, but what about our students who are being successful and are choosing to stay home because of one reason or another, whether it's the mask mandate or that they're successful, they meet all of our criteria, can they still continue to be virtual? That's all part of our contract that we've been filling out with families.
That's what I thought you were saying, so that was my understanding. If you are, you can be virtual if you want to be, if you are successful, correct?
I would be okay with that.
Right, that would be fine.
I would agree with that.
Me as well.
One other point of clarification, I believe in the contract agreement, just so the board is aware, we were asking for them to declare it's for a semester. Is that the board wishes as far as that timeline for declaration?
That they should declare by the 20, before the 27th?
No, that they commit to a semester. The challenge of the district having come, the reason they're going with semester contract is for that. It isn't today I'm virtual and tomorrow I'm in person. Some people have, it varies by the day. I slept in today's going virtual, but tomorrow I'm coming in person. Becomes a real challenge for us to document attendance accurately. And secondly, makes it extremely difficult for educators to provide instruction to students when their presence is not predictable.
I agree with that also. I, I think that they'll, they have to commit to it for a semester or whatever you guys, other people, whatever you guys think, because yeah, that's got to be too hard to deal with. I think they have to sign a contract. If, say mid semester, they're bailing. I mean, I think you should be able, the district should be able to make a decision if they can come back. You know, if they need to come back, or I don't think it should be on one. They signed a contract, it should be for that semester.
The eligibility requirements are in the contract. So if they stop attending school, if they stop completing work, those would be reasons for the principals to call a meeting with the family and potentially ask that student return in person. If there isn't a medical reason that would cause them not to be able to do so.
Correct.
Right.
Right.
So a question would be semester or quarter?
Was it the contract for a semester?
What are the recommendations from the AF or administrative team?
The more consistency, the better.
I, it sounds like I would say semester then.
I could live with either quarter or semester. I think that the one thing is, as Dr. Apples said, we don't want to have this mode popping, as it were, which is extremely difficult on the staff. The natural breakpoint would either be quarter or semester. I know I'm not sure if the pandemic will have changed dramatically in three months, which would be the next quarter time, or if we're making a commitment all the way to the end of the year. We could facilitate either, but stability is the key.
If you guys think you can handle doing quarterly, I think that would be probably the best because then you can kind of look at grades and things like that, so it doesn't get, you know, too far out. Or if they, say they want to make a change and come back for the fourth quarter because they're seniors, you know, then I'm sure you would, you know, if you don't want to make any special changes for some, then they would have that option, so you could do a quarterly. It's kind of up to you guys, I think.
I would agree with that too. It kind of allows you a little more leeway. And like you said, you know, in three months, things might change a lot. And if you're virtual, like, geez, I'd really like to go back to school, but I can't because I signed this contract. But anyways, the board would have to come back and change our motion or something like that. So this would simplify it a little, I guess.
Well, flexibility in the contract, so if, if somebody has the change, they could certainly with the principal. We're, we're a small district, you can be flexible and we're not talking about large numbers of people.
So if there's flexible in the contract, do we have to state whether it's semester or quarterly?
It's written into the contract, so if you, if you're preferring that it's a quarter instead of semester, and that would mean two meetings, the principals would meet, re-meet with all of them at a quarter time to create a new contract, one for each of the quarters.
I would think quarterly would make more sense, Dan.
Yeah, if that doesn't bother the principals, I think it'd be a good, good thing just to touch base and see how they're doing and, you know.
I would be fine with that.
The touch base happens weekly.
Okay.
So there's a DNF list every week and the teachers do talk with the students on weekly basis. Oftentimes it's much more frequent than that, but not less than weekly.
Now, I do have a question on the five-day-a-week. Now that would be cohort or no cohort? I'm suggesting no cohort.
At the high school level, they just resume their normal operations with students attending the regularly scheduled classes. Because every time the bell rings, it's apple cart upset. In 4K to eight, they'd stay in their cohorts, but start to do those new things that were in the slideshow. Like, like going to art class, going to music class in the classroom.
True.
Okay, just wanted to get that clarified. Thank you.
You betcha.
So do we need to change any motions for the?
I was going to suggest a, a new motion specific to the aspect of virtual learning. So that there is clarity.
If somebody can give a better motion than I can, I'm not very good at words.
I guess I'll give it a whirl. I'm not good with words either, Stan, but I'll try. I'd like to make the motion that we go back to all in person on, but what did we say, the 26th of January with looking at how students are doing at the quarter where they can. Virtual. Back to in-person, if, if need be.
Okay, that was a motion by Mr. Johnson. Do I have a second?
Who's your?
Dan for a second.
I think we'll feature to it. Any discussion?
A question.
Sure.
What about the class changes? Are we going to do that normal also, or are they going to be slightly staggered? As far as changing classes and the congestion in the hallways?
I can speak to that. We, we would look to do the high school on the normal day schedule. And the middle schoolers, we could delay by just several minutes to stagger our internal traffic pattern to make sure that we're not having that congestion in the hallway.
Sounds good.
Any other questions ready for discussion? Mr. Seager?
Hi.
Mr. Forbes?
Hi.
Mr. Holman?
Hi.
Mr. Scheller?
Hi.
Mr. Johnson?
Hi.
And it is an I for Mrs. Johnson as well. Motion carries by roll call vote. Mrs. Petten is absent. Item B, first reading of amended policy 0142.5 vacancies. Are there any questions or feedback on this proposed policy? That will be up for approval then at the regular January Board of Education meeting. Next meeting dates, January 20th, Wasby Delegate Assembly, 1:30 virtual meeting for the delegate and or alternate. January 20th through 22nd is the Wasby State Educational Convention, which is being held virtually this year. January 20th, Buildings and Grounds at 5:30. February 8th, Finance at 6:00. February 10th, Curriculum at 5:00. And February 10th, also Policy Human Resources at 6:00. At this time, I am looking for a motion to adjourn into closed session for the purposes of discussion of the employment status of employees over which the board has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility administrator evaluation.
Drew Scheller, I move the man on Board of Education to adjourn this public session, reconvene in closed session for the agenda items listed.
I have a motion by Mr. Scheller. Do I have a second?
Russ Holman, I second that.
Second by Mr. Holman. Any discussion? Hearing done. Mr. Seager?
Hi.
Mr. Forbes?
Hi.
Mr. Holman?
Hi.
Mr. Scheller?
Hi.
Mr. Johnson?
Hi.
And it is an I from Mrs. Johnson as well. Motion carries at 8:09 PM. As a reminder, board members, it is a separate invitation on your calendar that will get you into that closed session. And we can go ahead and, and join that as soon as you're able. Thank you all. Have a good night.
Thank you. You're awesome.
Thank you.